No, that was above the tiara. Your daughter's Lord Mayor of Disney, didn't he?
No, I didn't know.
That's a rule.
Mark that down, right?
Shut her down.
Yeah.
Okay.
I keep thinking I'm gonna go on a trip and I do that. I'm very sad when I don't.
You better behave over here, bud.
Okay.
Otherwise.
I know, I'm in trouble.
Yeah. I'll have to have you up.
You place her right there.
We don't have like to do the field. They don't have arms.
Sergeant of arms.
Yeah, we need one of those.
Close the door, quick, drive up.
Yeah. Okay. We're gonna get started, we have quite a bit tonight. If you printed out the one, we have quite a bit tonight. Instead of reading, it's seventy-three pages, or whatever it was. So, we'll get started. The first one is the position of department supervisor. My recommendation is until we're ready to pass the budget, that stays at second reading. You have seats?
I've been sitting all day. Maybe a little bit.
I'm gonna make a motion to just go ahead and put it out there. I mean, Mr. Verris has told us that, you know, it's there, there's no issue there whatsoever.
We haven't finished the budget, so why would we do that? Plus, in the budget, we are gonna spend over, how much? Six hundred thousand for updates and...
No, we're really not. That number keeps getting pared back by Kyle and I.
But your budgeting over half a million for the inside. And part of that was to set up a system that the service department could use to assist them in not having any paper. So, and I still stand by the fact that we promised these residents, if you pass the tax ordinance, we will put feet on the street, not butt in a chair. Pardon the phrase, but it's true.
It's not a butt in a chair, that is another...
That person cannot do the job. They are non-union, they were supervisor. Plus, I also took a look at the information that the mayor presented us. Trying to show, look at all the people they have, none of them are comparable to us. Twinsburg has five parks, plus a golf course, which they also have to run, a restaurant, which if anyone wants to, they require chefs and some servers, they have one as well. They have a dog park. That's their own. A bunch of these do their own in-house garbage. We don't do in-house garbage, we outsource it. You have a question? Mr. Ventura?
Pardon?
You have a comment or a question, 'cause you're...
I have comments, but I'll wait till you're talking.
Okay. It's interesting, too, that most of these are two percent for income tax. We're two and a half. We're gonna hire a supervisor when we said we'd put people on the street if you passed the income tax. I'm just baffled. And I get you want it so you can figure out how many more people we need. Why not compromise at least hiring two more full-time? That still won't get us back to where we were. And our last service director said, give me two people in the office, a foreman, and feet on the street. I don't need anybody else. So, why not compromise if we're gonna do this? Put some feet on the street and keep the promises we made to the residents.
In that levy, we said we would add one. We said that specifically, we've added that one. And just to answer your question about boots on the street, the plan that we have moving forward is we're gonna utilize more seasonals to determine what we do need going forward, as opposed to just hiring people and not having any data to back up what we need. So, John and I have talked quite a bit about bringing in more seasonals to determine what we need in terms of skilled work, as opposed to the unskilled work. Because there's a lot of unskilled work, which an example would be cutting grass or, you know, leaf collection. We can utilize seasonals for that. But before I just say throw people at it, I'd rather have a pretty good idea of what I'm gonna do with it. And it's not a, as you said, quote-unquote, butt in a seat. That person will be in the field all day, every day, with the guys, answering questions. If the problems arise, they're gonna be able to address those.
But they can't do the work. They're non-union. Also, I had the two pieces, neither one of them said one person.
That's what I said specifically, and I will own that, and I will state that publicly. I said it before, and I'm saying it again. We added the one that we said we're gonna add. Hold on, we added the one we said we're gonna add. I don't think just throwing more people at it's the answer, until we know exactly what we need.
So, you're saying today it does more?
We have an HR representative here, we have the department head here. The three of us have talked about this endlessly, and everyone's in agreeance of what we need moving forward. The administration tells you what we need, not what we want. It's a need that we have right now. I presented it to you guys to vote for. It's not necessarily up for debate. It's what I'm telling you I need, and if you choose to vote for it, I appreciate it. And if you choose not to, that's fine, too. This is not the place, it's inappropriate for council to debate what I'm telling you I need. If you have suggestions, I will always listen to all of you. But this is not the forum for us to debate what I'm deciding to do for the administration.
The work session has always been a forum to debate. You, as a council member, used to debate the mayor. So, I'm having a hard time understanding that explanation.
You also said many meetings that there was a difference between a legislative person and administrative person. You have said it yourself many, many times, when there was a lot of people that sat at this table. You are encroaching upon the administrative duties of what I'm telling you I need, not what I want. And you're gonna debate with me what I'm telling the needs of the city are going forward.
But I have to, I, as a legislator, hold the checkbook.
You do.
So, I have the right to debate it. Second of all, I have a right to say, we said this publicly. We passed this out publicly. We posted this on Facebook, we posted in the paper, and now we're saying, no, we're not doing that. But thanks for that quarter percent.
I did say one. I got the one that I thought I was gonna get. There's more money in the 280 fund, but until I determine what the needs are, I'm not just gonna go throw bodies at it.
Let me give you an example of something that was discussed last time, about manpower and supervision. Police department has three pretty people on the road, okay? When they have a question, when they have a situation, they don't call the chief's office, they call the sergeant, a supervisor. Fire department has eight firefighter paramedics on the road. When they're in a situation and they have questions, they don't call the chief's office. They ask for the lieutenant to come down, a supervisor, so...
But that's why service department has foremen, job titles that are not filled. We let foremen go, we did not replace them.
One of your foremen's an electrician, what happens when you got him up in a bucket truck? He can't come down off the bucket truck and go to another area where there's a whole nother crew.
But neither can a supervisor. And that supports my position of why didn't we fill the foreman positions and then backfill on the street? I mean, it's pretty well known that I am not for this. This tells me I lied to the public.
That's a pretty harsh way of putting it. I feel that the administration is trying to go about it in a financially thoughtful way to add a position that can help with the... We already have a good service crew that does a lot of work. And I feel that for their safety and for the residents getting what they expect out of our service department, it is going to be helpful to have a supervisor. And to that point, you know, we have, the rec director also has people working on her. You know, when a lifeguard has an issue, they're not going directly to the rec director. So, it would seem that service is the only department in the city that doesn't have someone in supervisor position, or someone in that structure, that level, that the staff can speak to when the administration or the director is busy doing administrative duties. I don't think that this is...
The foreman was for...
But I'm sorry, but it's true.
The foreman isn't working for him. And again, what are you gonna do when they need him and he's up in a bucket truck? The last time I talked to him, he was on 82 up in a bucket truck, and another crew's got a situation. Is he supposed to stop everything that he's doing? Come down off the bucket truck? Undo his harness and everything else that he's, you know, takes time to put on and get ready to go? And go to another whole location and supervise that job also?
That's why you also have a service director, and that's why we were to have three foremen. We have one. We didn't replace one. One was let go, and they weren't replaced.
We did not have three foremen. We said that, I don't know where you're coming up with three, we've had two. And the one that was not in the position anymore was for good reason, and I'm not gonna dive into that. That's not appropriate. But I'll give you one example with our current foreman, who works very hard and does everything he can to try and support us. We had a phone call come in about a light that's been out for three years. Whether or not it was three years, I'm not really quite sure. But that just further shows the point of what I'm trying to say, is that we need to have him out doing the electric work. We have one electrician on staff. He does a great job leading as a foreman when he can. But he's being pulled away from his duties more often than not, and we're falling short on the things that we need to get done because he's being a foreman.
And I know that.
And if you know that, why aren't you understanding where I'm coming from?
I think we've beat this up a lot.
You're not adding the people that can do the work. You're adding a person to say, I think you need people to do the work. What if next year I don't have the money to add them? Right now, I have money to add somebody. What if next year I don't? And this guy said, yeah, you're down five, just like you stated.
So, where are you getting the information to show that we need more boots on the street? What do you have, what supporting evidence do you have to support that?
We're down six guys.
Okay, so where...
So, we're down six.
What supports your position to say we need six more people?
What supports your position that I need a supervisor instead of someone up on...
I've given you a lot of things to support that. That's kind of a silly argument.
Again, I'm gonna try to end this and make a motion to put this on for a moment.
This is mine. So, I'm gonna make a motion to hold it second until we finish the budget discussions, 'cause I wanna see all the money that's being spent for the electronics, the computer. Part of it is to help that service director have a way to take the issues that he's getting that he said he needed assistance with, which was what the supervisor would do. I don't wanna spend money double.
Well, anybody wants to spend some more money, I might go. My whole problem with it is that I'm not exactly sure I know or I don't know. I have to take advice from service director and the mayor, who's got some background in that kinda stuff, and they say that they need this. I don't, I'm not sure. I see the guys out there picking up the, doing the snowplows. They're doing a fine job at it, or if they believe. I mean, you know, the job's getting done. I don't know, I don't know what I don't know. I have to, you know, trust in the administration knows what they're doing on that. This is very strange that this has caused this much controversy in the last four meetings. Because we did extend it one more meeting. I thought we'd actually talk the last meeting, have a work session on that specific issue. I don't know that we're gonna get anywhere if we do that. Doesn't appear that there's gonna be any budget either way, but we did talk about having a work session on that specific issue. And I'm still, I'm good for meetings through the end of the year, as long as I'm here.
Anyone prove in the paper that was signed and set out by the city, staffing levels have decreased 25%. The loan miles have increased by 40% or increased by 20%. Services are asking for 40% came from the administration.
The answer to that isn't, well, just we have to have one more person. The answer is, this is the mayor's answer to that. This is, you know, when services are, services requested are up 40%, you know, this is a way to start really evaluating that in a business way, to see how we, can we use the crew that we have existing to fill all these extra needs? Or how many people would it take to fill all those extra needs?
But we're...
You're allowed to speak, members of council member.
We don't need to hire someone at that round of money to tell us that. We have, like, what's the supervisor gonna tell us that our mayor and our service director doesn't already know? I mean, are we gonna hire someone for that position? 'Cause the supervisor, from my thought process, supervisors doesn't evaluate. That's something that the administration and service department director should be doing.
But it's in the job description, it's to evaluate the needs.
They evaluate the employees as well, and I can give you one example that I just thought of today. I talked to John Firston this morning, we had some snow come through again, and on Crow Drive, we're supposed to plow curb to curb. We have some newer drivers that, you know, are getting better, and they're learning as they go. And they were away from the curb probably a couple of feet. That's something where the supervisor would've caught that and said, hey, come on back over here, let me show you how you do this. I understand why you didn't go all the way curb to curb, but this is something we can address. He's not gonna catch that. I'm not gonna catch that unless I happen to drive by and see it. These are the little things that add up to quite a bit. And that's something where this individual will not be sitting in a chair all day. They'll be there supporting the guys for anything they need, shifting people and coordinating each day.
Well, so, let me ask this, to Jan's point. I mean, she, guess of all, I threw her out, pointed to me. The thing about the levy, we had two levies in a period of three years. If the residents showed faith in us to go ahead and do it, that should mean a lot to us all, and I know it does. Oh, my God, I just lost my train of thought.
We should utilize the money for more service workers, is that where you're headed?
No, 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 thank you, thank you. Foreman, would that not accomplish the same goal?
I have vowed to additionally add the second foreman back in, and I'm probably gonna add another one in the garage as a, what do we call it, a lead man? So, I'm doing those anyway, and there's a nominal cost that goes along with it. So, I'm adding more layers into what we're doing already. I'm already committed to do that.
That's awesome, okay, so we're getting somewhere here. So, if you're committed to doing the foreman, let's do that. Give it a period of time to work. If it doesn't work, then we need to do something else.
Keep in mind that in my, I know it's been a short tenure here, we did have two, and it wasn't enough to address the things that I feel need to be addressed.
You just said, I'm sorry, Kim, you just said a total of three, though, you said an additional one.
Well, the person in the garage is gonna lead the garage. That's something that, you know...
Three eyes there, I know it's a dual entity.
It's kind of a different, that's a different game, that's coordination.
But the person that was foreman wasn't demoted because he wasn't doing his job, it was because his action on the job.
I'm not gonna dive down that road.
But you just said, well, I mean, why don't you add another foreman and see how that works?
Because I know that that's not gonna be enough. I know 100% that's not gonna be enough.
Obviously, you're looking outside the house for a supervisor. If you don't have anyone in-house that you promote to a foreman, you obviously don't have anybody in-house that promote to a supervisor.
I don't know that at this point. Until I see who applies and they meet the requirements for the position, I don't know.
Well, you just said you don't have any qualified to be the foreman.
It's not what I said.
That took that place over.
The foreman that was in place is no longer there.
You'll post the position and consider any qualified candidates, just like, always have you.
So, internal would have an opportunity as well.
It'd be open for...
It'd be open for anybody to apply for it.
Welcome.
Yes, for January.
Your boots are too big.
I might be with you.
Little bit of levity.
That's the two they need.
That's right.
All right, we need to move on, because we have some guest speakers here tonight.
So, what are we doing with this?
You'll make your motions out of Florida.
I think, I think, I think, I really do. I think I had a good compromise there.
I agree with Shane. I think that it's, I mean, especially with the computer system that we wanna add in, we don't know how that's gonna affect that department. We might not need that position. You don't wanna hire somebody 'cause it is a career position, where someone's going to leave a job, to take this job, and then we might find out a year later, like, wow, we really don't need that position. Now, leave the guy out in the cold. You know, why not just wait and see, not pass it, or whatever, you know, and just, you know, maybe in a year's time, it proposed, it's proposed that it's something on a different time.
For third, and then vote as you feel. How's that?
What's that?
I'll offer it for third, and then vote as you feel. It's, yeah, you're in it. If you vote no, we don't create it. If you vote yea, it means to create it.
Do the same with 86.
Yeah, 86 has to do the same thing. Although, if we say no, it's not a medic, no.
Well, that would actually hold up in the, I mean, if you're voting negative on 86, would create a debate about the salary.
That's true. Okay, number 92. We had a wonderful finance meeting. We have another one, so we're gonna do second reading. Mr. Shane. Okay, number 90. Hi. Missing out?
Yes, ma'am.
Misses you.
So...
Sit over here if you want.
Is that where you would like me?
Wait, or you can stand.
I don't wanna stand. So, we have, as we always do, we shop our plan each year. And we were, we are with United Healthcare. And we had a HRA plan that was not integrated with our insurance plan, and it has been quite the challenge over this year. So, we put out to bid, and our bids came in, and United initially could not do an integration, and they came in at a 19%. Then they lowered it to nine. Cigna came in at a 4.71, and they can fully integrate the plan. United came in last night at 5:45 and said they will do the integration, but they won't lower the 9%, which they ultimately came down to. So, Cigna is my recommendation. Cigna is gonna save us money on the HRA, because their HRA integration will cost us $4.50 per employee per month. We currently pay a third party $6.50 to handle our HRA. That will go away. Cigna is going to give us a $5,000 administrative payback, and that'll come off our first bill. They're also giving us $5,000 in a wellness plan that we will be able to use to improve our wellness.
I know you've sent it all to the committee. Did you get feedback from...
You're on the committee here, too. Remember, Steve was sitting there.
So, everyone came back. There's lots of questions, and there are a few changes. And the major changes in this plan from United are basically your co-pays for office visits. So, if you go to a primary care, it's $25. If you go to an urgent, I'm sorry, if you go to a specialist, it's $50. If you go to an urgent care, it's 75. If you go to the emergency room, it's $250. Initially, under our United Healthcare this year, they would not pay those co-pays until the deductible was met that is paid by the city. Under Cigna, there is no deductible. The employee would be responsible for those co-pays until they meet their maximum out-of-pocket. For a single, that's $500. For a family, that's $850. Once they meet that out-of-pocket, whether the deductible has been met or not, they no longer have that responsibility for that amount. The give-back on that is, they now have no co-pays for any prescriptions. Those all have went away. No co-pays.
So, they have the co-pay for emergencies. That prescription says nothing.
That is correct.
And I gotta tell you, the dollars you just gave, I would've loved to have had that.
I would've sent the thousands for money.
And that, real quick, when you say zero for prescription, that doesn't mean they go up to the counter, pick up their drugs, and walk away without paying anything, right?
They pay nothing, but the HR, the city's on the hook for up to $6,000 for a family, $3,500 for a single with the card.
So, they still have to use the card when they're there.
There's a cost, but not to the employee. Correct. I'm saying the employee has no cost.
Just wanted to clarify that, they don't go grab it and go...
Correct, the city's on the hook for that.
So, it's the last column?
The last column, let me see what you have.
That's Cigna.
Yes, the 4.71, yes. So, your question about the task force committee, lots of questions, some concerns. But what I wanna make sure that we understand is, we have continued to have huge utilization, which is affecting our ability to get renewals that we're going to be able to continue to sustain. So, we have to find a way to improve that. And having co-pays will help have that skin in the game and improve upon it, because if I get a sniffle and I have to pay nothing to go to that doctor, will I be quicker to go? Or if I have to pay $25, will I get something over the counter and try to cure that cold before I go to the doctor? And it's not one person, it's not one group of people. We have to try to improve. Or we're going to get to a point where nobody's gonna quote us, or if they do quote us, we're going to be looking at 30 and 40% renewals. We have to improve our wellness. It's not one thing, it's utilization. We thought it was prescriptions, and when those numbers come in, it is not our prescriptions, it is our utilization. We, for every dollar in premium we pay, they are paying $1.21. So, they, they're losing money on us.
We talked about that during the budget meeting, why this became a major concern, and the fact that at some point you price yourself out of the business, and nobody wants to talk to you.
Right, and it's getting slimmer and slimmer. And I would've loved to have stayed with United Healthcare, because they have been loyal to us. I mean, even though we had a bad year in '17, they gave us a really nice renewal for '18, and then coming into '19, they went, we went fully insured, and they again gave us a nice renewal. However, they came in at 19 and came down to nine. But the problem is, the HRA is a huge piece of this, and I spent a ton of time helping employees navigate through it. Now, the insurance company will do all of that for us. So, the claim will go to them, they will process it under the high deductible end, and they will also process it under the self-insured side for the HRA.
We did talk about that also, because of the, you know, how an employee's like, I don't even know how to file it, or who to file it with. And you get confused, and then if you mess up, all of a sudden you got that guy knocking on your door, asking for the money.
Or their cards get shut off, and then they can't go to the doctor, go to the drugstore to get that prescription. And believe me, we, I mean, my file's that thick for this year of trying to help people. And it's not that I don't mind, but I'm one person, and there's gotta be a better way to handle it, and I think this is our better way.
So, it's better to include that price to have the insurance company. Any questions? This task force is made up of members of each department, and they're pretty vocal. They're not shy.
No, they're not.
So, when they have a question, they ask, and they keep bringing the issues forward. Tonight, I believe we have to pass this. You wanna explain why?
Yes, so, you had asked a question in the task force of how we can't get our numbers, because AT&amp;T brings their numbers in in August. And it sparked some curiosity on my part. I thought I knew the answer, but I wasn't sure. But the answer simply is, we're 93 lives, 93 employees, with, even with our dependents, we're 247. We're so small that the carriers only have to quote us 60 days before renewal. Now, we got our numbers a little sooner than that, but that's all they're required. We are such a small fish, they don't really care about us. If they get our business, okay, but they're worried about the big fish, like AT&amp;T, and those that have a lot more people. So, what happens? We get to the point where late October, early November, we're getting the numbers, and we're hoping that everything's gonna work out, and we can just roll right in. It hasn't worked that way with us because of our utilization.
You have to start by the first, we'll be done by the first.
So, we have to have open enrollment by the rules 30 days before the renewal, which is January 1. So, in order, if we didn't go with the new insurance company, we'd be golden. But because we're changing, United Healthcare, because we're below 100 lives, is not required to provide any information to Cigna. So, what Cigna is going to do, rather than make employees do enrollment forms, they're doing something called a passive enrollment. That just means you employees do not have to do anything. I do. I have to load all of the employees, all of their dependents, dates of birth, social security numbers. And our broker is trying to get as much of that information from United, but they have not confirmed that that's going to happen. So, there's going to be a lot of work from the HR side. Cigna wants the information by the 15th of November, that gives them, from the 15th to December 1, to load everything. As we can see, the 15th is tomorrow. And I'm not gonna get it tomorrow, but I need to have it to them probably by Monday. I know, why can't I do that?
I don't check this lady here, who's tech whiz.
I can do it, I'm good at data.
If there are any questions, I think, I wanted her to be very evident of why we need to pass this tonight.
The task, was the task force amenable to using Cigna? The task, was the task force amenable to using Cigna?
They, they had a lot of questions. There were some concerns. The only department that did not come back and say, we'll go with it, was the sergeants and dispatch. They never got back to me. They had questions. I've answered all their questions. They didn't come back and say, it's a go. But the patrol did, service did, administrative did, and fire came back. And I have, you know, their voicemails and their emails. I, I think there is some angst about having that upfront money that they have to pay. We're not ever going to make a hundred percent of everyone happy. We always said majority rules, so we have the majority. I would've loved to have had a hundred percent. But, you know, the majority has come back and said, this sounds like, you know, the best that we're going to have. If we go with United, even though they're integrated, we would have to pass on that nine percent. Would have to be passed on to the employees because the city cannot continue to have those kind of renewals and continue to pay the full brunt of it. So, with the four point seven one, the mayor agreed that, you know, we would not pass that cost on this year to the employees. So, their rates will stay at the two thousand nineteen rates that we're paying through United Healthcare. And we hope to have more meetings and do more to improve upon the wellness so that we're in a better position for twenty, twenty-one.
I'll be taking on the path.
Come on, run with me. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, come run with me.
Walk your dogs.
Yeah. And Nino runs also.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Nino runs.
Yeah. We run into each other races.
Who's doing this one?
Any other questions?
That's not workers' comp if you get hurt running into them. That's not workers' comp.
Who's got a gym?
I'll let them know. I did think about that.
Who's doing this one?
I'll do this one because I'm on the task force. This task force started. Under the, under Mayor Klufta?
Yes.
Yeah, we started this. One of the things that the task force is very amiable with, the fact that they're getting all the information. Yeah, it seems very late, but it's understandable why. And they get a voice. Keep in mind, they're out in the private sector. You don't get a voice. Here's your insurance company. Unlike the four thousand six hundred thirty-two commercials for Medicare. Pick one. So, thank you. So, we'll go one, two, three. So, you can spend tonight starting.
Yeah, get a good night's sleep.
We'll put the brown paper in for you.
Does the employee then come to you and say, oh, this has changed?
If, if there are...
This one's twenty-seven now?
So, the enrollment forms will be required for anyone that has a change, an addition, a deletion, that kind of thing. So, we will put out something to all users probably come Monday. If you have any changes, please come get this form. Because I won't know those. I know we've had a couple marriages. We have a couple babies due very, I think, this month, at least one. And those, those changes will happen before January one.
And is it federal law that we cover till you turn twenty-six?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
So, once they turn twenty-six, then obviously we have a, what we call loss of dependency. And then that changes and they come off. And I also follow that.
I was so glad with my son turning. Okay.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thanks, Annette.
Welcome.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. And thank you to the task force. Next up is ninety-six for these signs. We have a guest speaker tonight. Josephine, do you want to make one comment first before we decide where we go with this? About the PH?
Oh, well, the law director says, I think it's more appropriate for you.
So, I'll just make kind of a quick overall comment. We amend, have amended the sign code periodically. There's inevitably case law that comes out that we try to be compliant with. I believe the last time that we amended the sign code was two thousand and ten. So, this is kind of a timely update, both last time, Josephine verified, and this time as well because it's technically amendment to the zoning code. We have a thirty-day notice, a public hearing prior to any amendment being made. So, council should schedule a public hearing at least thirty days out, which would most likely put you into, or would put you into January, unless you want to have a special meeting around Christmas. So, probably January would be a good time.
I don't see anyone shaking their head for that. Okay. Would our guest speaker like to come to the table?
Sure.
Instead of sitting?
You can sit here. You can sit in the next chair.
Oh? Oh, you're just here for support. And Annette was able to get up and walk. She wasn't shocked, Josephine.
I brought cabinet as my muscle, so just in case. I appreciate mayor and council for having me tonight. My name is Brian Franz, for those that maybe don't know me. I've been serving as city planner from Macedonia for, going into my fourteenth year. So, it's, it's been a little while. Few mayors and a lot of amendments to the zoning code. And this one tonight is a comprehensive amendment to your sign code. And so, I don't know how long you want me to take, but I have, you know, a few pages of information for you. I can, I could bore you or do it quick and dirty. But I wanted to give you...
Well, we got the...
This is just, this is a...
Twenty-page update.
Yeah. This is just, this was the initial outline. And I'll just talk through quickly about this. The mayor engaged me to look at this and begin this comprehensive review and update of the sign code about a year ago. And you can see in that, that outline, that was November of, the third week in November of eighteen. We first met with the planning commission. And we broke the project down into three phases. The first being a thorough review of the existing regulations in the sign code, which was basically reviewing that existing document, having discussion with city staff to identify deficiencies in the code. I reviewed the board, what I could get of the Board of Zoning Appeals decisions as it relates to sign variance requests, as well as enforcement matters, talking with Chris Hall, zoning inspector, enforcement matters as it relates to the sign code. The, again, we met November of eighteen, the first time we met with the planning commission, and provided that outline that you have here this evening. And started talking about the code itself. As you could see, there were a number of issues that we talked about in that outline. First being some of the legal issues that Mark touched on. There are some paramount cases as it relates to sign regulations that have hit the U.S. Supreme Court and Court of Appeals even here locally. The big one is Reed versus Gilbert out of Arizona. And in a case here locally with Wagner versus Garfield Heights. Those cases focus heavily on the city's ability to regulate signage and specifically how cities regulate content and how they do or don't regulate free speech. The second item that we focused on in that, that evaluation again was taking a look at the BZA decisions and taking a look at enforcement issues. And that's important because are there a bunch of variances that are being issued for, for sign regulations? So, are we seeing a bunch of people come and asking for exceptions to the code as it relates to signage? That's important to know because what that tells me as a professional planner is that we have a problem potentially with our code, specifically on some issue related to signage. What we found was both in, both in the variant side of life and in particular the enforcement side of life, we have some problems with temporary signage, which I, I sort of figured, knowing the regulations and knowing sort of the environment of temporary signage, I figured we'd see some of that. So, as we worked through the code update, we paid a special attention to that. The third that we talked about in the first phase of this whole thing was getting the planning commission's input. They've been in some form or fashion working with the code and in particular the sign code for a number of years. And so, what issues do they see or hot buttons they see that they think need to be touched on with the sign code? And then finally, prior to all that, I went through the sign code as a professional planner and evaluated what issues I see, inconsistencies, problems with some of these content regulations as it relates to some of these court cases. So, we provided, I provided the commission with sort of an analysis of where the code stands with deficiencies. And that is this marked-up document here, which is your existing sign code. After I got feedback from the planning commission, the mayor, and I started to draft some regulations for the sign code amendment, continued having those meetings with the planning commission, tweaking things accordingly. And the culmination of all those efforts is the draft that's been presented to the mayor and to planning commission. Planning commission provided a unanimous recommendation to support the amendment of the code to include these new regulations. That final draft went to the law director. Mark and I met one evening for several hours and talked about a very exciting topic of sign code regulations. Mark has gone through the code and what's being proposed with a fine-tooth comb and what's recommended, we believe, as a legally sound, comprehensive amendment to your, to your sign code. Some of the highlights, if you will, I'm not sure some of you around the table will call them highlights, but they're highlights to us. We streamlined the, the code and eliminated several redundancies throughout the document. There were some language within the document that conflicted with other sections of the regulations. So, we eliminated those. We provided a direct statement that Macedonia does not intend to infringe on protected free speech. That's really important out of the Gilbert and Wagner cases, that we can't infringe on free speech. We, one of the big things that was a discussion item with the planning commission related to color, color regulations. For a long time, the city has regulated color as a, as a matter of aesthetics. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the Macedonia Commons development. For a long, long time, that was red letters only. Some relaxation of those rules has occurred over the years because that was an agreed-upon sign package by the developer in the city, boy, going back to like two thousand and two. So, we've had some amendment to that to relax some of the color regulations. But we wanted to, the commission felt strongly about sort of cementing in, what do we mean by color regulation as a means of regulating aesthetics for the community? That's on the very first page of the document. You'll see some, you know, what we call mission statements or intent statements as it relates to color regulations. Another thing we did is I mentioned Macedonia Commons, Macedonia Town Square, Alexandria Square. Several of these, several of these commercial developments have their own standalone sign package. So, we wanted to be able to formally recognize that. We put that in the intent statement. We formally recognize those. Plazas have their own regulations. But we say that these new regulations that are contained in your sign code effectively will be the guiding regulations. And so, if their commercial sign packages go away over time, they'll have to adhere to the current standards of the city.
So, that's kind of like an HOA for, for businesses? Like they make, the developer makes its own rules and regulations for signs within the plaza? And then that's, but they also have to follow within the city's rules for the sign?
So, a little, similar but different insofar as they are the regulations. So, we've adopted, they're actually over in my bag, but we have a number of these commercial packages. I'll use Macedonia Commons specifically. It has a rather, you know, thick set of regulations specifically to the commons that are separate, attached to but separate from the zoning code. They have their own regulations. We recognize those in the sign code, but they're their own standalone document. We, given some of those BZA and enforcement issues, we created an entire separate section related to temporary signs. It's eleven seventy-nine oh-nine, the pending code. And what that does is it, it follows the Gilbert, the Gilbert and Wagner cases insofar as attaching consistent regulations for residential and non-residential signage. So, one of the things that came out of the court cases says that you can't treat, you can't treat residential free speech in, in terms of like the area of the sign differently than non-residential. So, we bring those consistencies into the new code.
So, a resident who put up a sign, does it have to fit in this code?
I'm sorry?
If a resident puts a sign up, it has to fit within the code?
Yes, ma'am. It currently does and will after the...
But they can say basically whatever they want?
Yes, ma'am. We can't regulate what they say.
We don't look at the content and determine the regulation that applies to it more or less.
Okay. Does this also address political signs?
It does, as a temporary sign.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. I bet they'll submit.
So, we, somebody can't complain that it's offensive? And they have no grounds for the complaint?
There's still obscenity standards that would apply, but...
You can comply with freedom of speech?
Yeah, that's the question.
A really good example, oh, maybe back in two thousand and fifteen, fourteen timeframe, we had a sign that came in that said Beer Cave is over at the speedway. There was a lot of discussion about that sign. But at the end of the day, we couldn't tell them they couldn't do it. They have, they have the right to say what they want on their sign as long as it's not obscene.
Beer Cave is not...
Yeah, it's supposed to take it down.
That's a tough one to talk about.
You say it's unanimous. There's a letter here that doesn't appear that you have.
Well, I see Mr. Finley just came in and he may want to speak to the color. It sounds like maybe a color issue question.
Yeah, so the, the color, we went back and forth on this. And, you know, the primary and secondary colors really limits to red, yellow, blue, and then green, orange, and purple. Now, it doesn't say anything about white, black, or gray. And those are pretty standard on most signs. The other big-ticket item that, that I was a little shocked that we actually did get rid of it because I know that we talked about not getting rid of the exemption for a sign that is non-compliant. It used to have an exemption that if, if you changed the nameplate and it was non-compliant, it would just stay non-compliant. That exemption is now gone. And so, if you change a nameplate for a tenant, your whole sign has to be changed if it's non-compliant.
So, they're basically grandfathered in, that is what you're saying?
Right, currently. But we've taken that exemption out. And that's, so with the new colors exempting, without having white, black, and gray, you've basically made almost every sign that we have non-compliant. And if they change a nameplate, they've got to basically do that, a whole new sign.
Does it only change a nameplate of one that's black and white?
Sure. I mean, but...
Because I think of over, they were working on the ones over by Target. And, you know, they're going to, they have to add whenever they add somebody. But that's multi-colors.
Right.
This affects the jet. The jet goes by these rules, right? The jet?
It does, yeah.
Okay. The only one I can think of right off the bat that's black and white is Thonak Crowe in eighty-two.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's specifically just black and white. But in essence, that color in general, even just the back would be white. It would be non-compliant. Yeah, and as far as, as far as the colors go, you have a lot of arguments that this is my company, I have a registered trademark, this color is part of our branding, it's part of our trademark. There is a split amongst federal circuit courts right now. I think the Second Circuit has said that it is protected. I think the Tenth Circuit has said it's not protected. The Sixth Circuit that governs us has not ruled on it. So, right now, we're still validly regulating colors if we so choose to. We've done it for a number of years and we're continuing to do that now. Actually, probably creating a little more flexibility right now. Or clarification.
And if, so one of the things in the commons regulation, again, it used to always just be red. And that was amended by the planning commission at the owner, owner's request. Then developers diversified. I think the way it reads now is you're open to select your color with planning commission approval, which is arguably, it's, it's a little vague. But it's, it, it leaves it, you know, at the discretion of the commission. We wanted to, the commission wanted to lock down or put some regulations in place for, for, for the colors for the purposes of regulating aesthetics.
But someone who, to your point, if their sign today is black and white, they will be in violation and have to change?
Well, they won't have to change. They'll be legal non-conforming. But they would, they would not be in compliance with the, the regulation as proposed.
Until some, until something needs to change on that sign, then the whole thing has to be promoted up to what...
But the one I'm thinking of just got changed out, luckily.
Yeah, if you add a partner or something, or something other than that, you change the name. Yeah, I mean, I...
What if they add people to this because it's a multi-tenant? Is it now non-compliant? Because they're looking to fill the building. It's a black and white sign. If they go to put up a new name of a company, is that sign... If they go to put up a new name of a company, is that sign now got to change?
So I'm actually not sure that that provision was removed. I just saw your comment tonight, so I didn't have a chance to look ahead of the meeting, but I'll double-check that between now and the public hearing, and I'll shoot council an email so you all have a understanding.
Yeah, because it used to be in 117915, okay, three? It used to have exemptions, and now those are gone, so...
Yeah, we'll double-check.
Okay. Any other quick questions or anything else to say? Otherwise, I would ask, we set, we do this for first reading, and we set the public hearing, and then come to the public hearing and ask, you're going to be there, I would assume?
I can be, yes.
The planning commission? Or who's the third?
Might be on top of it, might be one of yours.
It'd be nice if we had all the planning commissioners there, while Mark's for the public hearing. So if anyone has questions, you know, because once this gets public, you may have other businesses saying, well, I got to ask, what's it meant?
And just on the black and white issue, those can be added easily, but then, you know, you'll have primary, complementary, black, white. At that point, do you have color regulations? So it's a tough question to tackle.
And that's why I think we want to make sure we're pretty specific of the A, so that he's not getting the calls.
Sure.
And there's still a requirement they be, they be consistent with surrounding property.
Appreciate you taking the time, and I'm sorry, yes, if you could be at the public hearing, be even better. We may have no one, or maybe us just ask you another bunch of questions, we thought.
Sure.
So Finney, if you could take that for first reading?
Thanks for coming.
And then we'll have...
Thanks, Brian.
What date do we want to set the public hearing?
For the first meeting in January, is it?
12th of January? Would you like to do it before then? Before, I mean, on the 12th?
We're okay with January? As long as a lot of departments was real good. We're okay with January. And then, will you be in town or England?
The night.
The night.
Yeah, it's the night.
What date did we say, so I can write it down?
January 9th. So before the council meeting? We have at 7:00, 7:15?
Okay.
What's your pleasure, I'm fine.
Thank you for the information, Senator County, for being there. Thank you.
And Brian, it's not an easy task to go through these sign codes. Inevitably, there's going to be ambiguities and issues that come up, but it takes a lot of time to go through.
I'm trying to think of when the last time was we really went through it with a fine-tooth comb.
It's about probably 25 years?
Yeah.
Because when we amended it on that last time that Mark mentioned, that was really just looking at dynamic displays. We didn't really do anything other than that. So this is, this is the first comprehensive amendment in a long, long time.
Thank you.
Who's doing this one?
Finney did. It's okay, I'll spin it, let's go there. Okay. And that was number 96. Number 97, Jess, if you'll take that. If you'll take 97 and 98, because they go hand in hand. Mr. Mark?
So ordinance 97, after the housing crisis and the issues experienced with the economy in 2008, there is legislation passed regarding land banks. Some counties were more active than others. Cuyahoga County in particular was very active. A lot of municipalities jumped on board and passed legislation adopting procedures to reutilize land that's either deficient, going through the foreclosure process. For whatever reason, I was actually kind of surprised we had not previously passed this legislation that allows us to participate, and really, the land bank steps in, handles the heavy lifting, but the city benefits by participating in this utilization program. The purpose of the program is to stop properties from flipping from one owner to another, and eventually you take control, you get someone to develop parcels that are traditionally non-tax generating, make a good business there, and get the tax dollars flowing. So all this legislation does is allow the city to participate in the land bank program. It's plain and simple.
It's an example that the old BP...
Could be. So what will happen? Once this legislation's passed, the county has to send a list of properties that are delinquent and going through the foreclosure process to the city, and the city can pick and choose from that list parcels that it wishes to gain a property interest in. And there's a whole process in place for that once we do it. But we'll get that list up front, so we'll know what we're working with, know what the opportunities are.
Questions? One, two, three?
I'm good on that.
That would be my recommendation, yeah. Yeah, there's some parcels that may be of interest that the city can take some immediate action on. When there are specific parcels that come up that...
No, we haven't talked about 98 yet.
When there are some specific properties the city's interested, then we'll have legislation coming to council for that as well, too. So this is just to participate in the program generally.
Okay. And Mark had made the comment to me that he was surprised we hadn't done something with this a while ago, but...
There's no harm to being able to participate.
Number 98? Do you explain that?
So ordinance 98 is an energy special improvement district. Your packet is so thick because it's what happens when attorneys get involved and you have terms like photovoltaic instead of solar. I mean, it's not always helpful, but that's what we have here. So you have a whole lot of documentation that basically accomplishes, accomplishes a process where the city gets a loan from the special improvement district operated through the county for some lighting on Longwood Park, I think to the tune of approximately $8,000. That'll be repaid through a special assessment process. Obviously, the land's owned by the city. There's no issue with Colonel Long's will because we're not giving out any property right to that parcel of property. We'll repay the county over time, repay the loan, and that's basically it.
Wow, that's a lot of paper for just basically it.
And to qualify, it has to be permanent infrastructure attached to the property that is energy efficient. So that's why we qualify for this.
This is for the lighting of the inside the baseball fields, the walkways?
Just the walkway. If we do this, does this allow us to go back to them for other things at the park?
We could.
Since it's only the park that we're basically putting in this?
The project just has to qualify. So it has to be LED lighting or solar lighting.
But we don't have, we just would submit them for the project, not have to submit the 6,000 pieces of paper saying, we want this parcel to be considered.
It might be half the...
Okay. It just seems, to their point, a lot of paper to say, I want $8,000 from you.
It is a lot of paper for $8,000.
And that's why I had asked Mark, because the will is very specific of what we can and cannot do, and to make sure that he looked at this to ensure that it didn't violate the will, because if we violate the will, the Y gets the property.
Yeah, it's still a public purpose, it's recreational purpose, it enhances the recreational activities that are occurring at the property.
So I killed a couple trees for this one. What's your recommendation, sir?
There's no reason not to pass it.
Okay.
I don't put a check mark by that until Jan says so.
Charles Justice.
You know, but I'm talking about one, two, or three. I don't put a check mark by that.
Well, I wanted him to talk about it because it is such a cumbersome, and it seems like an awful lot of work for $8,000, which, but we get $8,000.
No, there's other issues on why we're doing this to show cooperation with other communities in Summit County, and then it opens up the door for businesses to borrow money through the Summit County branch that handles...
So similar to NOPEC by using Summit County.
Yes. So it shows cooperation.
Sure.
And for us to do that, we have to pick a project.
Okay. We now have 99, and 100, and 101, and then we have to add a 101. All three of those are all financial, so Shane, you're the lucky winner. And you do see Josephine's little known about 101.
I do, yeah. We talked about that, too.
Normally, we would let Finney do that one, but we'll...
If he'd like to do it, he's more than welcome to.
No, would you like to?
No. You're letting me off easy this week. I see that, I cut one.
So in a nutshell...
99 and 100 need to be passed today, right?
99 needs to be passed because it's for next year's, but it's authorizing. It's kind of rubber stamp. We do this every year. So 99's 1, 2, 3.
Same thing with 100.
Same thing with 100, and 101 is the dollars we spoke about the other night in the budget.
Oh, we're not changing the budget, we're moving from one fund to the other, and we discussed that, we was good with that on Tuesday. You still did 1, 2, 3 on that?
Wait, it was moving money from here to there.
And the new revision that you emailed today, it's just people, yeah.
Yeah, people moving.
People's classification.
People are asking a lot of changes. And it was only one page, what's the matter? I mean, if these guys come out, yours was only 50.
I saw they lose money, but I don't know.
Okay. Anything else?
Good timing, that would be true.